All right, everybody. This is our presentation period, and we have one presentation tonight. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council. The City Council is serving as a successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board for May 16, 2017. This is our 5:30 PM presentation period. We have run recognition tonight, and this is for Danny Holt. I'd like to have him meet me at the podium there. The Mayor and the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs hereby honors Danny Holt for the contributions to the community and your efforts in the Desert Hot Springs Classical Concert Series. We've been having these classic concert series in our community, and Christ Lutheran Church has been very fortunate to host these events, and Danny Holt's been an inspiration in making sure these happen. How many years are we on now?
So, we just finished our third season.
Third season. And so, we want the public to know more about it, but we also want to recognize Danny for all his efforts in this. Mr. Holt has been significantly involved in all of the concerts, and also given concerts himself. You're trained in classical piano?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right?
That's right.
All right. I always write. And he does a fantastic job, and if you haven't seen it, you should take some time to see our classic concerts, but I wanted to give this recognition for you for what you've done for our community, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ah, I see. It's all being documented.
Yeah, careful.
Well, when I first came to the desert, almost 10 years ago, actually, I just completely fell in love with the desert, and Desert Hot Springs in particular. I grew up in New England, in western Massachusetts, so if you can just imagine this landscape, it's like I had come to another planet. And I just really fell in love with the serene, quiet, and beauty of the desert, and I feel like Desert Hot Springs is uniquely situated. You know, we're not in far, remote reaches of the desert. We're not too far from civilization, and yet we can walk right out of our backyard and enjoy the beauty of the wilderness. So, when I decided to make Desert Hot Springs my home a few years ago, I started asking myself how I might be able to make a small contribution to the community, and noticed that there wasn't very much going on here in terms of music or the arts. And since I'm a classically-trained pianist, I thought, well, one thing I could do is try to make some concerts happen. So, I'm also very grateful to the folks at the Christ Lutheran Church, who I didn't know. I just made a cold phone call out of the blue and said, hey, I noticed you've got a beautiful, big new church there. Ever thought about having some concerts? And it all came together wonderfully. The community's been very supportive, and each year, we get more and more people coming to the concerts and bringing in artists from Los Angeles, and even as far as New York, Tennessee, and just continuing to grow things bit by bit. And the support of the City of Desert Hot Springs has also been really crucial to that. So, I appreciate the recognition, and thanks for the support.
Thank you.
We'll be in recess till 6 o'clock. Good evening, everybody. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council, and the City Council is serving as a successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board for May 16, 2017. This is our 6 PM regular session. Again, we're here at the Mission Springs Water District, and we wanted to thank them for allowing us to use this chambers. We believe this will be our last meeting here, and we're back at the Carl May for the next meeting. We're crossing our fingers. Is that close to accurate? I got a thumbs up from our Community Development Director, so we're gonna be back at the Carl May the next meeting. But thank you, everybody, for trying to squeeze in here tonight, and again, thank you to the Mission Springs Water District for hosting us here again this evening. And we'll call the meeting into order, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember McKee.
Present.
Councilmember Zavala.
Mayor Proton Parks.
Here.
Mayor Mattis.
Present. Ms. Zavala has a personal issue she had to attend to tonight, so she will not be attending this meeting. Does the Council want to entertain a motion to excuse her?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So passes 4-0. Is there anybody from the Ministerial Fellowship that was given invocation tonight? I did not see anybody, so we will pass the invocation. We'll go on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Troop 1606 will be posting the colors and presenting us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you again to 1606 for your participation in posting the colors. At this time, we'll go to the City Attorney's Report on Closed Session. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We don't have any reportable action this evening.
Thank you very much. The approval of the agenda, I'm gonna ask for approval, but we also need to pull item five from the agenda tonight, as there were some complications with the posting of this item, so we won't be able to hear this item tonight. So, within that motion, also, any items on the consent calendar, please pull those now.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 16.
And then, we'll be rescheduling item number five. Any other items to be pulled? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's a motion, a second, on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So passes. Public comment. At this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council not listed on the agenda. Comments are limited to the first 10 speakers or three minutes per speaker. Speakers may not yield their time to others without consent of the mayor. All comments are to be directed to the City Council, and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. If you have not filled out a blue sheet, they're right there. I have one. Is that correct, Gerald? I have one tonight. Mr. Bacardi.
Thank you, Mayor. Request being I'm the only one, and seeing how is we have three weeks to the next council meeting, I'm gonna ask for a little extra time. Whether you decide to help me out or not, that's another thing. Couple of announcements coming up. My name is Mike Bacardi. I'm a resident of Desert Hot Springs, Low Counsel, Low Staff, Chief, and all of the above. Thursday, May 18, which is the day after tomorrow, the Friends of the Desert Hot Springs Library will be presenting Jazz Cafe, which is a platform for the members of the community, any members of the community, to express themselves through any form of performance talent they possess. Starting at 6 o'clock, this will be at the Senior Center. The Friends will also be having their bookstore open again this Saturday from 10 until 3. Come by and get some great bargains for summer reading. The address is 66580 8th Street, just east of Palm. Memorial Day weekend has a number of things going on. As you can imagine, the starts off with a weekend sale at the Pueblo, Cabot's Pueblo, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Come in for 20% off all items at the Trading Post, with members also getting their 10% off on top of that as well. There will be two Memorial Day observances on Monday, of course, the 29th. One will begin at Veterans Park at 10 o'clock. The City and the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission invites the public to come out and join in this commemorative program. There will be a flyover by a C-47 from World War II from the Palm Springs Air Museum. The Desert High School ROTC, the Choir, Boys and Girls Scout Club, the Boys and Girl Scout Troop 1606, sorry. Mayor Mattis, councilmembers and staff, along with guest speaker Sergeant Major Crispin will be there. Starting at the same time at 10 o'clock, that at the VFW Post 1534, which is One Clubhouse Drive, they will be observing, begin observing the day also. 10 AM, we'll have live music, voodoo hustle, a raffle, donated items with another raffle. It will be a family fun day with jumpers, barbecue, cotton candy, and more. That begins at 10 o'clock also. Desert High School will be holding a school raffle at Wardman Park, which is 65780 8th Street, to benefit the high school events, sports teams, and clubs. Tickets are only $1 apiece for this raffle. For more information, you can contact HAVR at 760-382-8077. This is gonna be, I'm sorry, on May 27. And my last item, the Wardman Pool will be opening for the summer, beginning on May 20 with a splash party from 11 to 2. There will be free swimming, hot dogs and chips, pool safety classes, a photograph with a mermaid, Russell needs to do that one, and some music to go along with a great afternoon.
I'm in the mermaid suit.
Oh, I forgot. All right. And again, I thank you all, and please check out dhsdaily.com. It's the local calendar with things posted on it that's going on in and around the city, and it's basically for you and your community. You can post on it yourself. Again, that's dhsdaily.com. Thank you all.
Do I have any other public comments? I don't have anybody fill out a blue sheet. I know Ms. Grant does. She's standing back there. She came in just now. I know you have a public comment. Come on forward.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, and residents. I just wanted to let everyone know that June the 21st, the moving wall will be coming in, not to reiterate anything that Mr. Bacardi stated, but we still need volunteers to help assemble the wall and disassemble the wall on June the 26th. That is some manpower that's needed. Also, if anyone wants to help man a post from June 22nd through the 26th, the Rotary has a sign-up sheet, the Women's Club has a sign-up sheet, and they can also contact me. I will also be leaving some flyers at the back for everyone to pick up, and if Mr. Bacardi didn't mention, on May the 25th, Desert Hot Springs, as part of its yard beautification program and Mayor's Monarch Pledge, along with the Desert Hot Springs Garden Club, will be having our first UCR Speakers Bureau Series, and that will be May the 25th from 1 to 2 at Gaita Desco. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have to make comments and public comments? Final call. All right, we'll close public comments, move on to City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils. You're all aware, we contract with the Riverside County Fire Department for fire services. That includes fire inspections, and we have a local fire inspector that works directly for the city as part of that contract. Recently, we've experienced some concerns with approval of plans and the processing of those development developments that relate to medicinal marijuana. The county council had refused to allow our fire inspector to inspect potential properties that had any involvement whatsoever with marijuana, whether it's manufacturing, enrichment, cultivation, or any process that is related to that, unless we indemnified the county itself for the inspections being conducted by the contracted fire inspector. As you know, the City Attorney's Office was working directly with the county council to try to resolve this, and once that was not able to be reached, we opted to, and this council gave authority for me to hire a city fire inspector to follow all the proper county rules and regulations, but he would work directly, or he or she would work directly for the city in that capacity. Since that time, I've been contacted by the Riverside County Fire Department. They, again, were a third party in this. They weren't directly involved in the decision-making in reference to the indemnification process, but they did have a great role in convincing the county council that that would not be appropriate. And so, as of today, I was advised by our Division Chief, who is in the room, that we have full use of our contracted fire inspector again. Myself, the Division Chief, Eddie, who's back here, our fire marshal, and members from our Development Department will be meeting on Thursday to discuss the processes and where we're going on from here, moving from here. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that. Is there any questions, reference that? Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other staff members? All right. With that, move on to Mayor and Councilmember comments. Who wants to start?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This two-week period was pretty busy. I had a meeting with John Holcomb. The Art Zone program is moving forward now. We had a little bit of a period of time that staff was basically overloaded, and the Art Zone stuff got put on the back burner for a little while, but now it's moving forward. I think John's been doing a good job on it, and I think we're gonna make some progress over the next few months. I had a meeting with the hoteliers. I took a Martha's Village survey. They are in a position, they're trying to raise a significant amount of money, and try and figure out how they're gonna change their mission. They've been supported by government as a transitional housing unit. What's happening now is the department of, that's in charge of that HUD, has changed its emphasis and is not going to do transitional housing anymore, so they have some significant issues as far as fundraising. I attended Southern California Association of Governments, networked with a bunch of people, attended the jobs and housing presentations that existed, both of which I could spend probably an hour and a half talking, but my fellow council member over here, Yvonne, has told me she will kick me if I do that, so I won't do that. I had a little speech at the neighborhood group. I appreciate having the opportunity to do that. Basically, I talked about how lucky we are as a city to have the volunteers we do, the people that are on the City Council that we have, and the staff we have, to move the city forward, because I think that's what we're doing. I think everyone, at the basis of their thought, is placing the city above everything else and trying to make sure that we make progress. I talked to Julie Bornstein of Coachella Valley Housing. I put forth my opinion that they have done some things in the past that are not very well-received in our city and have developed a little bit of a bad reputation as far as that's concerned. She told me that their emphasis over the next few years is going to be on infill lots, and I think that that's a positive thing that's happening. I attended the classical concert with Danny Holt, running it. It was a great saxophone quartet. In that small a space, I was concerned that it was gonna be a little loud, but they did a really good job, I think. Also, attended the Oasis Awards, which is the Coachella Valley Visitors Bureau Award Ceremony. We had two winners from Desert Hot Springs, Maria Elise, who's the owner of the spring, and Kathy Stewart, who works at Living Waters. And it was a good event. It basically focused on all the things that are happening in the tourist business and what's going on. I attended the animal campus meeting. I actually had to run the animal campus meeting because our chairperson, Ty Peabody, decided that I would not screw things up if I ran it, so that went off pretty well. On a sad note, my wife and I attended the Tom Heidrick Memorial Service. He and his wife did so much for this city, it would take me a long time to discuss what, how they were involved. It was good to see their family and to be in a position that they could discuss how lucky they felt for him to be their father. There is one thing I'd like to clarify, and this is for the staff. Septic systems. I've been told independently that we handle them, and the Mission Springs Water District handles them. And some of the "we handle them" comes from people that are on the Mission Springs Water District Board. So, I'm really concerned about this, and especially with a lot of the situations we have with trying to get septic services, sewer services, to a good portion of the industrial area. So, if we could get some clarification, if we could get clarification as to whether we can do that anymore, because one of the rumors I've heard is the Mission Springs Water District is not allowing septic systems anymore. We need some clarity on this, and I think the way we need to do this, especially with what's going on, is to reinstitute a two-on-two with Mission Springs Water District so that members of our board and their board can get together to talk about these sorts of things. So, that would be my suggestion. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Parks.
Yes, thank you. Joe and I attended a couple of the same things. I'll just mention that. Also, attended the meeting with John Holcomb on the Art Zone, and that's coming along. I attended a coffee klatch at the shop with Eduardo Garcia, our Assemblyman, and our Mayor Scott Mattis. I think it was well-attended, and a lot of good questions and answers and information provided by the two. On the 6th, we had our annual Day of Hope for our Seroptimus House of Hope here in Desert Hot Springs, which is a women's substance abuse recovery home. We have one fundraiser a year, and I think it was well-attended, and I was glad that I was able to have some of my friends attend with me. Also, attended the Coachella Valley Business Bureau Oasis Awards, and also congratulation to the Living Water Spa and Maria Elise at the spring. On the 11th, I attended the Energy and Environment Committee at SEVAG, and we discussed the CCA, which is that program, the possible JPA for getting a JPA to buy the electricity and sell it, thereby giving a break and a reduction in costs to our residents. We don't know how far it's gonna go, but it's in the JPA status right now. I want it to go if we can actually see a savings, and only SCE customers can be in this JPA. Also, attended the funeral, a couple of funerals, the Tom Heidrick funeral, and also the Keith Dawson, who was an active member of the Elks. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Betts.
Thank you. Just quickly, on the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, Mr. City Manager, I think there's a rural designation that they have to qualify for. I think it was at a population of 20,000, and we now exceed that. Can you research that and find out how that impacts our ability to permit projects in our city? The, now, I have about 25 pages I wanna read on CV Link.
Watch the news.
Our mayor went to a long meeting on that yesterday. It was supposed to be funny.
Was that funny?
It's supposed to be.
If you haven't sat in the meeting, you would get the joke if you sat in the meeting. There's a couple individuals I'd like to read a lot of pages.
But I did attend a SEVAG Public Safety Committee meeting, and recently, we wondered a few issues regarding, obviously, public safety. One of them that came up was to get a briefing on a homeless plan update, and I forget the exact terminology they're using, but something struck me. It just jumped off the page when I was reading the staff report, and it's the first time I'd seen it. And it was a plan to set up four homes in each of the three cities of Cathedral City, Palm Springs, and Desert Hot Springs. And this would be placing homes in residential neighborhoods with six to 10 beds for people to come on a 90-day stay, and I think the thinking was that this would replace the homeless overnight shelters that were taking place at Roy's, which is, of course, closing. And it was a surprise to me, and I think it was a surprise to everybody on the, at the Public Safety Commission meeting. So, that's being looked at, I understand, but certainly not acceptable to me. The impacts on communities would just be significant, so I'm not sure where that came from. I know we had a presentation. I went back and researched our meetings, and I researched the Executive Committee, Mr. Mayor, that you sat on, and there was no mention of that at the Executive Committee at SEVAG, and there was no mention in the presentation we had back on, what was it, March 21st, at our meeting, there was no mention of anything like that. And we had designated a placeholder, just a loose placeholder of 103,000, to try and supplement the homeless effort, which I was in agreement with based on, you know, the things that I'd heard presented, like keeping people from getting homeless in the first place, and resources, and that type of thing. But then, with this thrown in, causes me to rethink that. The other problem there is that it was a $164,000 contract put out on a two-week request or proposal, and they only got one proposal. Surprise, surprise, two weeks for 864. So, I'm getting into a little bit of your territory at the Executive Committee. Don't mean to be, but just that struck me as odd also. So, and then, the final thing I noticed was that regarding the 103,000 that we talked about, other cities are now talking about going to a set formula. Now, I reviewed our meeting where we all discussed this. I think it was near-unanimous, or was unanimous, that we would like to see a different formula, except I noted in your committee meeting for tomorrow that they're giving an indication, if you could read it one way or the other, that, oh, we've committed to 103,000, so you might wanna make that clear.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Let me finish up my report. Okay. So anyhow, that's going on, and I just, you know, okay, SEVAG's commanding some attention. It commanded a whole bunch of the mayor's attention at the last meeting, and then this came up at the Public Safety Committee meeting, and I think, I know for sure Palm Springs is concerned about it, and I'm getting some indication that Cathedral City doesn't exactly like the idea of the homeless houses in the middle of residential neighborhoods, but anyhow. Moving on, it's, let me wonder the things. The, I'll jump to this, sorry. Then, we have, at SEVAG, we also have the Inland Choice Power Community Choice Aggregation Business Plan, which is some 82-page technical document that I see that's on the SEVAG website. So, that's a pretty heady issue. And then, of course, we have the CV Link, and what else do they have going on down there? So, all this is leading up to, it seems like SEVAG is becoming a very intensive agency for us to be participating in, and I'm gonna suggest that possibly a placeholder on each agenda for SEVAG items and updates. I know everybody here is really busy, and I just thought this might trigger us to say, hey, here's what's coming up, because I was really surprised at what took place down there. So, obviously, that's up to the mayor's discretion if he wants to put something like that on the agenda, but I think something to keep us all better informed, it's not the quiet agency that used to just take care of transportation issues. It's grown in leaps and bounds in the, you know, $120 million project, CV Link, and now competing with Edison, and then taking on a new homeless effort, and everything else that's going on down there. It's really demanding a lot of attention. On lighter notes, and I wanna thank Mike Bacardi for mentioning that the Wardman Park Pool Splash Party Opening Ceremony is taking place on May 20th. That's a Saturday, 11 AM, and certainly would love to see all the council members there. They're invited, and if you come just for the opening ceremony, that'd be great. Sunline turns 40 years old, and on May 31st, there's gonna be a celebration at 7 AM. I'm looking for volunteers that wanna show up at Pearson and West, somebody from the council, to greet riders. I'll be down at the Town Center stop greeting riders down there. I'm on the president of the board this year, so I've gotta go do the duties down there, but if somebody wants to get up at 7:00 in the morning, are there any early risers? That'd be wonderful. Moving on here. Getting questions through social media about a 4th of July city fireworks, so I'll clear that up here. I wasn't aware that we did anything as a council to do anything on fireworks, so, and I'm just letting everybody know that for two years, I had raised money and organized and put on the fireworks show, and this year, that's not happening. So, if anybody else wants to do fireworks, jump in. If it's to the councils of mind that they wanna do fireworks, I'd be willing to volunteer to help, but I'm not gonna lead any full-blown efforts as far as if we did anything on 4th of July. But we did move the, two years that we did the 4th of July Festival at the Shopping Center, we did move it to the October 1st. 1st, from called it a 4th of July celebration to a fall festival. So basically, we're doing that same thing again this year. So just let everybody know that's in the planning, so we can look forward to that. Good time, and hopefully to be bigger and better. The county building is tomorrow. We have a ribbon-cutting, and that's some very good news. I got an inquiry from the press about that, and I think that's just a wonderful thing. It's going to make life a whole lot easier, already hearing from residents who have to drive to Cathedral City now, that that's going to be a great deal. So that's at, what, 11:00 tomorrow?
10:00.
10:00, so don't be late. 10:00. Attended the SCAG Regional Conference, had some really good speakers on data collection, and it's amazing what you can do when you start gathering this data. I asked the city manager to give me, I just did a sample, I was at the conference and asked him to give me some data that we can look at. I wanted to show it to the guy, and instantly, I had it back. So that was, that was really good. And so I gave it to him, and he's crunching those numbers to get back to us with whatever he can find. It's just, he did it in New York, and through some odd data collection, they could tell people from California went to what part of New York, people from upstate went to what part of New York. And so, there's good things you can find out from that. There was a panel discussion, it was mostly about putting people out of work through robotics. The panel was okay, but one member of the audience, a certain council member I know, asked the most intriguing and astute questions, and I noticed everybody circled around him and not the panelist when it was over.
That's because I toot better.
And attended the League of California Cities. Councilmember Yvonne Parks and I rode up there together. It was a nice ride. We had a good time. It was a good meeting. And it was a very nice event at Tesco, Tesco Park on Saturday. Good job to the organizers of that one. Everybody had a lot of fun. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. McKee.
Just one quick thing. I would suggest that we-
One more item. Sorry.
That's okay.
No, I don't. I'm done. I'm sorry. I just-
I would suggest that we bring the matter of the homeless thing back for either a study session or action item. My discussion of that is going to take more than a couple of minutes.
We have, we have something we put on the agenda real soon on that issue.
Thank you.
All right. Just real quick, I didn't have a lot going on, but I'll give a quick report on what I did the last couple of weeks. As stated, the Assemblyman Garcia came to town to do a town, a little meet and greet, and they actually invited me to stand with him and answer questions from our community. We had maybe 50 people out there. It was really nice. It was hosted by the Shop Cafe here in Desert Hot Springs and Algo Sole Hotel. The Assemblymen and I spoke for about an hour, probably answering questions, and it was a nice event. Riverside County Transportation Commission met, and as a representative from the city, a couple of things we voted on, the budget for '16, '17, the public hearing was open. Because it's such a large budget, they keep the public hearing open for over a month, so that public comments can be made at multiple council, or multiple commission meetings. And then they'll close that budget in June and adopt it. A long-range transportation plan is being adopted by the Riverside County Transportation Commission, and we voted on the concept of that and moving it forward. We had an update on the 91. I don't know if anybody travels on the 91 from here to Orange County, but the express lanes have been opened. The first week was kind of slow. It only had 100,000 cars traveling through it in the morning, and 100,000 cars traveling through it in the afternoon. But now, it's peaked out at about 140,000 cars in the morning, and about 140,000 cars in the evening are traveling through those express lanes. There is a transponder that you'll need, just like if you travel to the other counties, and you can purchase that online if you go to Riverside County Transportation Commission website. It can funnel you to where you need to buy those transponders. But it's a nicer way to get from the Riverside County, Riverside City area through to Orange County. I was invited to speak at the Marine Corps Junior ROTC Promotion and Award Ceremony. It's a fantastic, I've listened to past mayors, Mayor Parks and others, talk about how fantastic this program is, and I've always had multiple events. It's a lot going on this month, and I've never been able to attend one. And I made sure I canceled everything this time and went to it. The, I call them boys and girls because they are. They're boys and girls, and they're participating in this program, but they're becoming, there's a handful of them becoming men and women. Six of them are enlisting out of the graduating class into the military, and we awarded them with accommodations from the mayor's office and city council for their service to their country, and their state, and their city. And really thrilled watching some of them. We have one that's, I believe there was one that was going to be attending West Point, but there was one going to the Navy, two to the Army, and three into the Marine Corps. The ROTC program has over 100 kids involved in it. The, before it started, they gave an actual, the drill teams came out, the boys' drill team, and then the girls' drill team, and it's just amazing how they did this. And there's awards from multiple organizations throughout the Coachella, actually throughout Riverside County on scholarships. And there was one cadet, Johnson, who just was fantastic in his leadership, and probably took in about $5,000 in donations that evening from other, from organizations from around Riverside County. The, there was four that were awarded scholarships to Texas to participate in the National Drill Team Academy, and there was just multiple other awards. And it was just, it was heartwarming to see this. The kids are wonderful, and if you ever have a chance to go out to one of their events, please do. I also took the survey for Martha's Kitchen. They reached out to multiple individuals and met with the individual, the survey company last week, and gave my opinion on it. Attended the Mission Outreach God's Kitchen fundraiser over the weekend, and I was dumped multiple times. And I had to, I didn't have to, but see, the police chief and I last year participated in this, and somehow, this year, the police chief had a conference to go to for some reason. But I sat in there, chief, for us, so.
I saw that, thank you.
Yeah. But it was a great event. Raising lots of money for the Mission Outreach program here in Desert Hot Springs. They do a fantastic job of feeding the people in need and homeless of our community. And then, let's see, what else I attend? The late supervisor, John Benoit, had appointed alternatives to different committees, and knowing that our new supervisor was being appointed, this was my last meeting to attend for John Benoit, the CVCC, Conservation, no, Coachella Valley Conservation Commission. And so, there's a couple of things that pertain to Desert Hot Springs, since Ms. Vala, who represents Desert Hot Springs, is not here tonight, and she attended that meeting. I'll just bring them forth. We, basically, the commission and the Mountain Conservancy bought some more land in the preserve in and around Desert Hot Springs, as they start to connect those dots and preserve that land. That's really all that pertains to Desert Hot Springs. As mentioned, the Coachella Valley Association of Governments last night had a special meeting on the Environmental Impact Report for the Coachella, for the CV Link. Only about 100 comments were made, a little over two hours. Luke sat in with me and the city manager, and Luke really enjoyed it. He sat in the audience, and I'm kidding, because it's a long time to sit in front of a lot of comments, but it was a very passionate subject to a lot of individuals in the, in the Coachella Valley. And so, Environmental Impact Report has to have a public hearing, and we had that. There's been over 200 meetings since the conception of this. This was the EIR being brought forth, and even though Desert Hot Springs is only an option, we are participating, and we do support the plan, and we approved, the plan was approved unanimously, no, not unanimously. All four, one against and one abstained. And I'm trying to remember the number of individuals approving it, but quite a few. It was an interesting evening, about three and a half hours, but it is moving forth. I had a couple of moments with our new supervisor, Emmanuel Perez. He will be coming to Desert Hot Springs very soon, he says, to meet with people and to meet with the city council, and talk about projects and programs and other things that he can help with. So we'll be looking forward. We worked with him when he was our Assemblyman, and I've also worked with him when he was the Public Affairs Officer for Borrego Health. He's always been a good supporter of Desert Hot Springs. I'll be looking forward to working with him more in the future. Department of Social Services, as I mentioned, they'll be opening their new facility tomorrow with a grand opening. Just some facts about it. John Benoit, when he was alive, had announced it'd be 125 jobs, and that was about right. The facility can actually accommodate 132 employees, but the current plan is to start with 90 employees. And there won't be any new hires. They'll actually be shutting down the facility here in Desert Hot Springs, a smaller facility, moving the staff over there, and then partial staff from Cathedral City over to this new facility. But it'll be new expanded services with Medi-Cal, CalFresh, CalWorks, Welfare to the Work Program assistance, in addition to childcare, child work, housing assistance, and family stabilization services will be offered at the new center. So if you have time tomorrow morning at 10:00, and you're not working, please come out and help or assist, or assist. Celebrate with us the grand opening of the Department of Social Services office here in Desert Hot Springs. It's located on Pearson Boulevard, right across the street from the high school. And that's, oh, I did, I had lunch today at the Cottage Two. And I ran into, I actually walked in, sat down at lunch. I had a couple ladies come up to me. Their news was there. I didn't know what it was about. They had already left. And some ladies asked me to come down and meet Jane Rupert. She is 107 years old, having her birthday there today. So happy birthday, Jane. We are thrilled to have you in the community having lunch. Thank you. All right. With that said, we will move on to the administrative calendar. Item number three, Desert Valley Disposal Reinvestment Payment and Extension of Term of Franchise Agreement. And Mr. Tanner is on vacation, so that leaves it to Ms. Kelly.
Thank you very much, Mayor. In March of 2014, the city council approved the franchise agreement between the Desert Valley Disposal and the city, taking it out for an additional 15 years through 2029. Included in that agreement was a provision for a reinvestment by Desert Valley Disposal of $1 million, and also an opportunity going forward for an additional eight years, if they chose to do so, to request one-year extensions by paying a reinvestment amount. To date, Desert Valley Disposal has requested two extensions. Today, they're requesting a third. I think if you move forward with this extension, they will be paying the city a reinvestment fee of $120,000, which will take their existing contract out to the year 2032. If this is also approved, it will leave them five more years that they can take up, take, bring this forward to the city for discussion. Do you have any questions?
Any staff questions?
Yes, I've got one.
Yes.
Chris knows that I love Desert Valley Disposal, and I appreciate everything that they've done. What I'm thinking about, though, Desert Valley Disposal is a private company, and at some point, there could be something that happens where the present management sells out or does something like that. And I'm concerned with how far in the future we want to go. It's not because we want to change, because I think we're committed to you guys. But on the other hand, I'm just, I'm for this item. I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but I think it's something we should think about in the future, is, you know, how we're, how we're going to deal with this situation, because we're talking about, the extension now would take us until 2032. And although, if Chris were still there, I hope they stuff him at some point, and he stays there forever, things change. And I think having a really long time period that you're supporting someone gives us less flexibility. And as I said, I see nothing that would cause us to change our relationship right now. This is just a matter of making sure that in the 2030s, some council isn't coming back to us and saying, what the heck were you guys doing at this point? So, anything. Anyway, that's all I have.
Any other?
Yeah, I think probably some council in 2030 is going to say they did us a heck of a favor getting our, well, there's all kinds of sayings you can use. I won't appear, but this is a one-year extension, is my understanding correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't have any problem with it, and I certainly, this community should be very, very appreciative of what Desert Valley Disposal did to get us out of a very severe crisis. So I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay.
Hold on, I can't yet. I got to open public comment.
You do?
I mean, I've got to take public comment.
Well, I didn't know we were in a public hearing on this one, sorry.
Um, I'm sorry, I used the wrong terminology. Is there any, any comments on this item? Anybody like to make comments? Yes, sir. Chris, did you want to make some comments?
If it's okay?
It's absolutely okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff and residents. Thank you very much for the time. Since the very beginning of the meeting, still fresh, so if you'd like to come up here and make a small comment. Our families, the Wages, the Cunningham's, are third-generation trash. We've always looked at-
Did you say it's third-generation trash?
Third-generation.
Did you meant it, council?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Want to clarify that for your father, I mean.
Yeah, no, he'll be glad that you brought that up. We've always viewed, or looked at the city and our business as a fine example of public-private partnerships that you, that you hear about. And we value that partnership very much. We talk about it all the time. You know, we know, we're a utility. You can't make everybody happy, and everyone here is familiar with that. But the city trusts us to, for the safe and timely collection of garbage disposal, and we don't take that for granted, ever. I can tell you, Council Mayor McKee, that I will be here for a very long time, as I am the low man on Toto and Po moving my way up. So, but you're, you're right. You know, some things could happen later on, and I think most contracts have stipulations in there where you can talk about, the city would have to approve something like that, or approve a new collector if they were to. But we can talk more about that if you'd like to.
Is that just private, or do we have that discussion?
No, no, absolutely. But I just want to say, we appreciate so much the leadership, the staff, the community. Anytime that we can fill a need or help somewhere, we're going to, because that's what a good partner does. We will always do that, and appreciate your consideration and the opportunity to work for as long as we possibly can with the city of Desert Hot Springs.
Thank you, Chris. Any other public comments? Got a call? All right, at this time, we can have more discussion and/or entertain a motion.
We'd like to make a motion, to approve a minute motion to accept-
Right.
Request from the-
Right.
Approve a minute motion to accept a request from Desert Valley Disposable for, disposal for reinvestment payment and extension of term of the franchise agreement as specified in the staff report.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any more discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? So passes unanimously. Item number four, and we will be representing ourselves as a successor agency. Approval of the preliminary and final official statements and purchase contracts in connection with the insured issuance of the 2017 Subordinates Tax Lot Allocation Refunding Bonds and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. Again, Mr. Tanner's on vacation. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you.
I have a question for the city attorney first, I'm sorry.
Yes.
This is funding City Hall?
This is, this is a refinance.
Refinancing the bonds, the proceeds of which went to City Hall, correct?
I didn't want to ask.
I'm asking for the purpose of, so that-
My name is Thomas Jacob. I'm representing the underwriter, Stiefel. So the 2017 lease revenue bonds, which were issued last month, the proceeds of that issue went to refinance two outstanding obligations, and also a portion of which went towards the new City Hall.
And with that, then, I am going to recuse. Thank you.
This is not, this does not have anything to do with City Hall. So this is-
What is this? Okay, it doesn't.
This is, this is a successor agency transaction, the proceeds of which will refinance three of the successor agency's outstanding obligations. It is a refinancing only. It does not include any components for City Hall.
Did the successor agency own any property that was within proximity of the downtown? You know what? I'm going to recuse.
Just an abundance of caution, you're going to, he's going to-
Out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself. I have a property at 12106 Palm Drive, and which is very close to the revolving agency or inside.
All right. We'll wait for Mr. Betts to leave the room, and then we can start with the staff report.
I'll just do the introductions. This evening, we have Mr. Thomas Jacob with Stiefel and Doug Anderson, Reverberant Futures. They've both been working with the city staff on this to get us to this point, and they'll be giving a presentation this evening.
So, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, members of the successor agency. As Linda mentioned, my name is Thomas Jacob, and I'm here representing the underwriter, Stiefel. Here to discuss an item that was initially brought forth to the successor agency, successor agency back in February of this year. At that time, the successor agency directed staff and consultants to move forward with this refinancing. Since that time, this financing- Since that time, this financing has been approved by both the Oversight Board as well as the Department of Finance. Now we've come full circle, and at this time, we seek approval on a resolution approving the official statement and the bond purchase contract. I'll go over both those documents in a little bit. But if you don't mind, I put together a presentation of about five slides, give you a debrief on the financing, talking about market conditions, expected savings on the refinancing, as well as the schedule. And hopefully, it answers any questions that you may have, but please stop me if you do have any questions. So starting with page one, we give a little background of the refinancing. The purpose of this refinancing is to refinance approximately $22.8 million of outstanding agency bonds. These bonds were issued in 2006, 2008, and 2009. This is solely a refinancing. There is no new money, no project funds being generated from this financing. There is no extension of the final maturity. This is about as plain vanilla of a refinancing for debt service savings as you can get. This is an obligation of the successor agency alone. In other words, there is no exposure to the city or to the city's general fund. The bonds are paid by tax increment revenues, or revenues derived from property value fluctuations in property value within the project area. Savings, based on current market conditions, are expected to be approximately $5 million, which will flow to all of the taxing jurisdictions, of which, one of, one of which is the general fund. And based on current market conditions, we expect over $600,000 to flow into the city's general fund over the next 22 years. As far as the schedule is concerned, if approved tonight, we're hoping to jump into the market over the next couple weeks. And as I'll show in the next slide, it's a great time to be issuing bonds. Rates are at historic all-time lows. So on this slide, we show the 30-year AAA MMD curve. This curve is, is the index off of which most, if not, well, 90, 95% of municipal bonds trade. This shows a 10-year history going back, well, a little over a 10-year history going back to 2006. And as you can see, the current 30-year rate is about 3%, which is well below the 10-year average of 372. It's interesting to note, if you expand this back about 15 to 20 years, you'll see that interest rates have been higher about 95% of the time. As I mentioned, in other words, it's definitely an issuer's market, and we've seen a lot of refinancings over the past couple of years, as issuers jump into the market to take advantage of these low rates. I also wanted to point out, just for your reference, at the point in time at which the 2006, the 2008, and the 2009 bonds were issued, and as you can see, they were at points in time at which rates were, were much, much higher. Here I have some additional details and the estimated savings on the bonds. So as I mentioned, based on current market conditions, we expect approximately $5 million in gross savings on this refinancing, of which about $660,000 will flow back to the city's general fund over the next 22 years. It's about $30,000 on an average annual basis. We're hoping to improve on that as we jump into the market. These are based on expected credit ratings in the triple B category. Now, we expect to hear back from the rating agency, who is Standard and Poor's, by Thursday. Sorry to keep you in suspense. We're expecting to hear back today, but we'll be sure to update staff when we hear back, as soon as we hear back. And I also want to note that these triple B category ratings are very, very strong ratings for these types of credits. We mainly see ratings in the triple B or the single A category for these types of credits. We also expect to secure municipal bond insurance. We've already received some bids and some indications of interest from several of the bond insurers. And what this would do, if we were to obtain bond insurance, it would elevate the credit rating from a triple B or a single A category, wherever we end up, to a double A category. So that would lead to a lower cost of borrowing and a higher level of savings for the taxing jurisdictions and the city. Here at the bottom of the page, you can see the breakout of the savings on an annual basis and gross basis per taxing jurisdiction.
Stop you there for a second.
Of course.
I think most of the people don't understand how the tax increment works. Could you maybe go over that a little bit, so people can-
Doug, I know you could probably put this a little more eloquently than I can. So Doug Anderson from Urban Futures, the city's financial advisor and fiscal consultant.
Thanks, Tom. Good evening. So the, the source of repayment for these bonds is the old tax increment from the redevelopment project areas. Even though the state did away with redevelopment project areas, the tax increment continues. This is a situation where a base share value was established when the project area was formed, back in the 15, 20 years ago. And every year that growth occurs over and above that base share, that tax increment is captured and shared with the redevelopment project area and other taxing entities. There are some pass-through agreements, there are some deductions. The county takes some off the top for collection purposes, but the net tax increment flows to the benefit of the old RDA and now the successor agency, now that the successor agency has taken over. So the, the source of repayment for these bonds has not changed. It'll be the same as it was for the old RDA bonds, we're just simply issuing at lower rates. In simple terms, it's like refinancing your mortgage. Even better, we're not going to extend the term, we're keeping the same term. So it's really the rate differential that's creating the savings here.
Do you have any more questions on this page?
I just wanted to go more basically than that. What they're looking at in this chart are the various agencies that signed off on the RDA bonds initially, because the tax increment from these other areas, from the county, from the school district, from the community college district, all committed to providing the increment for the redevelopment agency. And what, what this is showing is that that increment is basically used to repay all those people, those, it goes back to those other agencies.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
On the following page, we have the anticipated schedule. Of course, we're having the meeting this evening. You know, if approved tonight, we expect to post this official statement, one of the documents that you're approving this evening, and then jump into the market as early as the following week. It may actually end up being a week later, but we expect to take advantage of these low rates relatively soon. And then we would close the bond issue, so the difference between the pricing and the closing, the pricing, we establish the interest rates, then we formalize and finalize all the documents associated with the financing, and that leads up to the closing date, which is the milestone for the issuance of the bonds. So on the last page, I have the recommendations, but obviously, staff recommends that the agency approve the resolution, which does approve the official statement. So the official statement is essentially a marketing document for potential investors. It contains terms of the financing and credit information on the successor agency as well as the project area. The bond purchase contract is, the, the contract to be signed on the day of pricing. It, it ensures that Stiefel will purchase the bonds and sell them to our investors. Any bonds that remain unsold, we will take into inventory and lock in those aggressive rates, and we'll hopefully work off those balances to other investors in the upcoming days or weeks. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much. We'll open up the questions.
One more quick question. If, if you read the body of the documents that you've given us, the present bonds are not paid, will not be paid off immediately. There, there is a time period, a 10-year time period that we were told about, that, that the bonds cannot be paid off, and I assume that's what it is.
That is correct. That's very standard, what is called an optional call date. So most bonds are issued with this 10-year call date, which the issuer can optionally redeem them after 10 years. They cannot redeem them beforehand.
The question I have is, for that, the, one bond can be done immediately.
The 2000-
The other two bonds are a year out and two years out.
Correct.
We're, we're selling bonds to pay all of them off right now, theoretically.
The proceeds from this issue will sit in an escrow account.
That's where I was coming, that's where I was going.
Yeah.
The thing, the thing I'm a little nervous about is, for two years, we're going to have a few million dollars sitting in our escrow account. I would assume that there's insurance there, number one, and I would assume that we're going to get some interest from that also. Is, are, is, are both those assumptions correct?
That is correct. We will, the, the plan is to secure bond insurance on this transaction. The proceeds from the bond issue will sit with the trustee, the successor agency's trustee, and that amount will be put into various investments that will earn interest until that call date is enacted.
Hopefully not made-off investments.
It will earn, it will earn a little bit of interest. Well, you know how high-yielding interest works.
I'm, I'm, I just wanted to make sure that I was correct in this, because it does make me a little nervous that we're going to have a delay in, in paying things off. So thank you.
Of course, yeah.
Any more questions for staff? Open public comments? Would anybody like to make a comment? I see none rising. Last call. Close public comments. I will entertain a motion from the city council with more questions.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a recommendation that we adopt a resolution of the successor agency approving preliminary and final official statements in the purchase contract in connection with the issuance of 2017 subordinate tax allocation refunding bonds and providing for other matters properly related thereto?
You said that very well.
I'll second that.
Second?
I almost did it in one breath.
Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So passes 3-0.
Thank you very much.
Someone grab Mr. Betts?
I just want to make sure, I have other questions if I have a jury ready for the base. I'm very excited. So, I'm a church and a generation. All right. Yes.
Item number five was pulled from the administrative calendar and will be brought back at the next meeting. We'll be moving on to item number six, as Mr. Betts is approaching, I'll announce the item. Approval of the non-exclusive license agreements for professional services between the city of Desert Hot Springs and All Desert Aquatics for the 2017 Summer Swim Program. And this will be our community development director, Daniel Porres.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In 2016, the city entered an agreement with All Desert Aquatics for the running of the 2016 Summer Swim Program at the Furby Aquatic Center. That swim program provided lap swim, water walking, stroke improvement class, water aerobics, recreation swim, swim team class, and open swim. It ran from May 31st to September 30th. It was open six days a week at various times of the day and evening. The city has met with All Desert Aquatics again and has received proposals to run the 2016 Summer Swim Program. The only differences between the last year's program and this year's program are the dates and the price. All Desert Aquatics actually provided two options. Option A, which would run from June 1st through September 30th, with a cost of $47,849.93. And option B, which would run from June 1st to August 31st, for a total cost of $42,705.73. This cost is an all-inclusive cost, where All Desert Aquatics provides all the staffing and everything involved. The city is still responsible for the pool maintenance and the restroom janitorial services. Staff has met with All Desert Aquatics, and we have finalized the details of the agreement, which is also in your, one of the exhibits in your packet. Staff has recommended the city approve option A for the Summer Swim Program, which will run for a total of 122 days, from June 1st through September 30th, for a total of $47,849.93. We have the proposals also in your exhibit, and we have Renee from All Desert Aquatics here as well, if she will have any questions. Take it with my staff report.
Open up public comments to this portion. Is there anybody who'd like to speak in public comments? I don't see anybody standing. Ms. Higgins, would you like to say anything? You don't have to, and I know you love to speak in front of the, we're joking. With that, I'll open up to comments from council. I see none, I'll entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any more discussion?
I'd like to say one thing about this. I think-
So close.
So close. I'm sorry. I, I had a discussion about this with the city manager, and one of the things I see over the whole four years I've been here, which seems like 28 dog years-
I told you.
Is that we've handled this four different ways, all four years. And what, I know the city manager supports me in saying we, we need to be consistent, but we, we've dealt with the four vendors differently each time, and, and that sort of drives everybody crazy, besides just me. So just so we can be in a position that we get consistent about this, and I'll be really happy.
Any other comments? Did you want to respond?
This is my first year, so we're doing it correctly now.
We'll see.
With that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So passes unanimously, 4 to 0. Item number seven is the, okay, so we're going to be shuffling people around here. This is the initiate proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments for the lighting and landscaping maintenance district and drainage assessment district. We're going to take this slow. Couple council members do need to recuse themselves on certain portions of this item. I'm assuming both of you can, all of you can listen to the staff report, and then during the recommend, recommendation, which is three recommendations, we will take them individually. At that time, I will be asking each of the council members to recuse themselves, to turn their seats around and not participate in the conversation, as we have one council member that cannot easily get in and out of the chambers. This is a practice that can be made. The city attorney is okay with it. We will be announcing and not acknowledging that individual if they, they try to participate, but they'll be turning their seats around and not being acknowledged during that process.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's my understanding that both A, Zone A and B are combined into one resolution and haven't been-
On item one, it is, yes.
Have not been bifurcated, and I believe it's Zone B, where I have a financial interest in a hair salon located at 12106 and a half Palm Drive, therefore, I will be recusing.
And Ms. Parks, you'll be recusing on item-
Two and three.
Two and three. So for the first initial report, you're going to be recusing for the whole item? Okay, so you're going to leave the room. All right, item number seven, and Ms. Kelly.
Thank you very much, Mayor. In order to continue to levy the assessments annually for the citywide district, the lighting districts, and the drainage assessment district, the Act and Assessment Law requires that the city council conducts certain proceedings each year so that the assessments can be placed on the tax roll and eventually collected from property owners and then paid to the city. This is the first step out of three, and this begins the levy process, which allows staff to continue to work with the consultant web and associates to work on the engineer's report, which will include a description of the improvements and services to be provided and financed to each one of the districts, and also the method of apportionment, which will be listed in those engineer's report. At this time, staff is bringing forward the three, I'm sorry, the three resolutions initiating the proceedings. After this is passed, in the next meeting in June, there will be the resolutions for intention to levy and the collection of assessments, and then followed in July with a public hearing. We do have someone here from the consulting firm, Charmaine, with Web and Associates, if you have any additional questions.
Appreciate it. We'll open up our public comments on the first recommendation, which is to adopt a resolution of city council initiating proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments for the citywide landscaping and lighting maintenance district number one, Zone A and Zone B for fiscal year 1718. Is there any public comments for that item? I see none. Close public comments, and I will open it up to city council for comments, questions, or motions.
Move staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So passes unanimously. Now, we do have a problem on two and three.
Yeah, I will be turning around.
No, well, this is a problem, because we don't have a quorum.
Oh. Yeah, we're, we're going to go ahead and address.
Can you grab Mr.'s? I'm going to have staff, actually, we'll take a five-minute recess, we'll get you in order, and then somebody needs to grab Mr. Betts and explain the process to him. Five minutes, and we'll come back, and we'll finish items seven, two, and seven, three. three. All right. If we can have everybody find their seats, we're going to get started. No, actually, they're going to make announcements. All right. If I can get everybody back in their seats. Uh, item seven, two, and three, the city attorney has talked with council member Betts and we've come up with a solution for tonight on moving forth on these two items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Council member Betts, um, did not want to go ahead and participate in the drawing of straws. In that case, we do have a, uh, we do have a, a legal necessity to move forward with this, even though Council member Parks has a conflict due to the fact that she owns property within one of those areas. Uh, because if without her, we wouldn't have a quorum, couldn't move forward. Therefore, um, she is legally, uh, it's necessary legally to have Council member Parks participate in this item.
All right. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to item number seven, two. This is adopt the resolution of the city council initiating proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments for the li- li- landscape maintenance district number two for fiscal year 1718. Do I have any public comments on this item? Do I have any comments or motion from the city council?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item number seven, three, adoption, adopted resolution of the city council initiating proceedings for levy and collection of assessments for the drainage assessment district number one for fiscal year 1718. Uh, is there any public comments on this item? Seeing none. Uh, comments, motion from council?
So moved.
Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So passes unanimously. Can someone grab Mr. Betts, please? All right. Item number eight is the fireworks permits. Uh, this is going to be our acting community development director, Daniel Porres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Per Desert Hot Springs Mini Code 8.28, fireworks. Just a real quick brief explanation. Uh, no person shall sell fireworks without a fireworks per, program permit and a fireworks safety permit. Firework permit applications may be submitted to the city between March 30th and April 6th of each year. A fireworks committee consisting of one representative from the fire department, one from the city's finance department, and one from the city manager's office shall review applications and make a recommendation to city council. And city council may issue up to four firework permits per calendar year. The city advertised and provided firework permit applications via the city website and over the counter. During the period of March 30th and April 6th of 2017, we received six firework permit applications. Uh, we comprised, we comprised our fireworks committee and the fireworks committee reviewed all six applications. All six applications were determined to meet all submitted requirements, all safety requirements, and all permit requirements. Based on that, the committee is recommending that city council approve all six firework permit applications as submitted for the safe, for the sale of safe and sane fireworks. You also have a listing of each, um, application number, the nonprofit that corresponds to it, and the fireworks down location. There is no major, uh, fire concerns. Each applicant will be, that is selected, will be required to have a pre, um, a pre-meeting with the fire marshal to go over all the requirements during and after the setup. You also have the six application packages on, as exhibits for this item. I'll gladly answer any questions. That could be my staff report.
Do you have any public comments on this item? Anyone liking to make a public comments? Final call. Any questions for staff?
Motion to approve? Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any comments or questions for staff at this point? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number nine is the second amendment to the joint exercise of power agreement of the Eastern Riverside County Interoperable Communications Authority, known as Erika. And this is our chief of police, Dale Mondery.
And I have a, Gerald, you got to cue up my, I have a 45 slide, a presentation.
That will keep you focused, so you won't go off track then.
Just for the sake of education, not for the council, but for public, Erika is the Eastern Riverside County Interoperable Communications Authority. Um, and so it's, all the, the majority of the Coachella Valley agencies, cities, as well as the city of Beaumont, um, are in a JPA that oversees our radio communication system for emergency operations, um, as, as well as, um, uh, the CAD, all the hardware, software, um, basically everything that it takes to operate a, a radio system. Uh, we're in the JPA with that and they are requesting, um, an amendment. Uh, this system includes, but it's not limited to radio and dispatch service, CAD, um, RMS, and, um, other technology needs. What the amendment deals with is there, it's a very narrow-focused JPA. They would like to, um, expand and look for grant funding opportunities. Um, right now, all the cities pay a portion to keep the, the system going. Um, the city's portion is currently $321,000 roughly a year, um, that we pay into, uh, the Erika system. And this JPA would authorize the board to seek grant funding opportunities as well as infrastructure enhancements. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And this kind of, uh, just to add to it, since I'm the chairperson of this, this kind of stemmed from the organization looking at maybe body cameras and other things to that extent, correct?
It, it, it did because everybody was using different systems, not only the body camera system, but, um, the, and they want to make sure that it would be compatible at or, you know, within the system, but more so the, um, the, the RMS, the records management system. Um, there are some agencies who are looking to use a different vendor other than the current vendor. So they would need to make sure, they, they want to be able to say, hey, that's fine if you go with company X, but it has to be, um, interoperable with, with, with this. And I believe in, in, you might have a little bit more info on that. There have been instances when Motorola has had some, um, some opportunities, uh, financial opportunities for us that we just weren't able to participate because of the way the JPA was written.
Yeah, it's just loosening the, the strings a little bit to broaden the scope. So it's, it's, um, something that we both suggest that we move forth on. Uh, I'll open up for public comments at this point. Is there any public comments on this item? I see none. Questions for the chief?
I have a question.
Yes?
Okay. So first off, we've got two amendments to the JPA agreement. Is that what we're looking at? 1.2 is to allow the Erika JPA to purchase equipment? And each member jurisdiction can go purchase that equipment itself now, correct?
That is correct.
And this will restrict our purchases, any future purchases, to making sure they're compatible with Erika. So if we should, for some reason, decide that, uh, we're going to keep paying our minimal dues to Erika, but that we want to get out of Erika and go purchase other equipment that's not compatible with Erika, my concern is, is that this JPA agreement as written won't allow us to do that. Um, and so I don't know how much this ties our hands. There was talk, uh, especially during the budget crisis of, uh, you know, one of the options was just continue to pay the minimum for Erika, not the participatory rate, drop it down to 170 instead of the 300 and whatever it was.
And, and that's not my understanding of it. So, uh, I'll use, um, Cathedral City, for example. They recently purchased body cameras, um, and so their system will be a standalone. It will not be tied into, to Erika.
That was before this.
It will, my understanding, it will still be that way. Um, they're just looking for, for opportunities that, that if an agency chooses to tie it into Erika, they, they can.
Okay. Well, I'm reading it here. The language says, "Each member agency reserves all its rights and powers to proceed separately within its jurisdictional, jurisdictional boundaries of any compatible public safety communications projects anticipated to become part of Erika, provided however that planning, design, and construction such projects should be consistent with the functional specifications for the Erika project," so on and so forth. So that to me seems to indicate that we could go ahead and do it ourselves, so long as what we did was compatible with Erika. I could be wrong on that. I didn't get a chance to ask the city attorney all the questions they have on this. The other section, section 2.2B.1, it says hereby, the JPA is hereby amended to read, uh, that the responsibilities, um, responsibilities, "The technical advisory committee shall be responsible for the operational administration of the Erika project and the public safety projects and have the following powers and duties to administer the Erika project and public safety projects in accordance with the purposes set forth in section one." It's all a copy out of there, but I don't have the prior language to tell me what I'm changing from and to. But I do see that this is giving it to the TAC, which is not the elected body. So this is becoming a JPA that's not governed, at least in this respect, by the electeds, the city officials. It's now being governed by the, um-
Department.
Chiefs, department heads. And, um, so I, I, I have a problem with that.
So I think I could, might be able to clear that up. The TAC is agency representatives that are the end users. So we review basically the, the equipment and of that, um, what would work best for us in the field. That, those recommendations are presented to the administrative board. So any and all of, of those financial decisions, we don't have spending authority on, on the TAC. So none of those, if I understand your question, those decisions would not be made at the TAC and only as far as, as infrastructure, equipment, recommendations.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm looking at is hereby amended, but I don't know what I'm amending.
Can you tell me where you're?
I, it's, I have section, I just copied my notes.
Oh, okay.
And it, and it says, um, you know, hereby amended. Typically, when these things come through, you have a strike through or you have the old one that you go back and refer to. So I can see what it is that I'm voting on. And then it says that one of the things is responsibilities. The TAC shall be responsible for the operational administration of Erika project and the public safety projects. Now, normally, and this way the thing works is, in this situation, the chiefs and those people, the technical expertise and what they want to do would recommend to a governing body, which would be the electeds. And the electeds are going to say, well, we're not going to disagree with the chief. So, okay, you get what you want. But at least there's that formal step in the process to that if, maybe if a chief recommended something like, you know, a million dollar camera system, the electeds could say, no, we're not going to do that. Sorry, it's too extensive and it probably won't keep working. So you, you just, you know, things like that come up. And so I just don't know what, and nobody here on this council could know what we're voting for in this. Um, we have Indio, Palm Springs, Cathedral City, Desert Hot Springs, and Beaumont are part of this JPA.
Correct.
And originally, this was conceived when they were having some confusion. The county wasn't updating its, um, its radio system. Nobody communicates. So we thought, okay, we'll do this. We'll get everybody else to come on board. Well, now the counties updated their system and a bunch of other cities have a choice to go with them or go with us, as I understand it. And we're not, uh, we're pumping in a bunch of money this thing, but we're not getting, uh, anything back that we had hoped originally to get back on this. So I think this is, I, if I had it to do over again, I wouldn't have voted like I did to create Eric. I would have said, no, it's not a good idea. Let's go with the same system the county is, um, because of the expense. And whether that's right or wrong or not, that was my, that'd be my feeling if I could turn back the clock. And now I'm being asked to expand something that I don't think I agree with to begin with. So at the very least, my vote would be no, because I can't see what I'm voting on. And I think that'd be the responsible position of the council to come back and say, hey, we need to see what we're voting on here. The, the language should, I think our attorney should look at this and say, hi, guys, here, here's what you're looking at. And, uh, because we are authorizing a, a significant change in a JPA. It's a JPA amendment. So that concludes my remarks, Mr. Mayor. So that was, concludes my remarks, Mr. Mayor.
And not, may I?
Yes, please.
Uh, and not to slight the county, 'cause they're a, a, a great operation. Um, and I don't know what upgrades that, that they have made to their system. But, but I know that actually Erika i- has better capabilities than the county's system. Uh, they can, we can't get into their network, for lack of a better term. They can, they can climb into ours. We have, um, Erika, on the infrastructure side, set aside a, a huge number of channels that can be patched in, uh, together, so that, that we could actually communicate. But the way that has to happen is they have to come into Erika versus us going into their system, because they do not have enough bandwidth, um, in, in their, in, in their infrastructure.
I understand that technically, probably Eric is a better system. I'm just looking at the dollars and cents and three-hundred-and-what is it, seventy-eight thousand dollars a year coming out of our budget to support this.
Let me move on to some other council members, I do want to make some comments on this as chair, and I don't know if it'll reassure you or not. Uh, but our system with Erika is something that we had to, we had a couple of choices. The statement that was made over here is very correct, we, we had a system that wasn't working anymore. Most of the agencies in the valley did not. We chose to go with Erika because the county was not upgrading their system at that time, until after we started upgrading our system, and then they started to upgrade their system. We've come to find out that it is way more expensive to be on the county system, and we actually made a very, uh, good move. The three-hundred thousand dollars that we spent annually, half of that goes towards, um, a repayment back to us owning the system. Two cities have paid off their system completely. So there was no, we can't just pay a minimum if, without dropping out completely, uh, on the repayment, and then we would be defaulting on, on what we owe. So we're almost, I wanna say we have three or four more years of payments?
Yes, and-
And we'll own the system.
And, and that's correct, and last year, they actually, um, did kind of the same thing that we just did with our bond measure. They worked with Motorola, um, and, and actually lowered the interest rate that, that, that we're paying.
And so with that said, it's, 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 looking at all the numbers, and they're not here, and I understand what you're saying, but trust me, if you went back and researched all that, you'd find that we've, we got a better deal going with this system than we would have with the county system. And, uh, Motorola's been great. Um, really, all this, for, all this bringing, brought forth from the committee was a suggestion from staff that they'd be able to broaden some of their scope, so when they go to look for body cameras and other things that will interact with the system, they'd be consistent. So it does not tie the hands of the agency to go buy whatever they want, such as Cathedral City if they chose to. But it just asks that we be consistent, so I understand your point, and maybe there should've been some more staff report in there, but we'll work on that in the future. I don't know if that changes your vote or not. Uh, Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I think the section that Councilmember Betts brought up is pretty clear that the TAC is responsible for operational administration, not for making budgetary decisions or anything like that. But I do support the fact that, uh, I think we need some more information on this, and I would, I would suggest we table this until the staff reports improved a little bit.
Continue.
Yes.
Ms. Parks? Is there any urgency on this item before, Chief, do you remember?
Not, not to my knowledge.
I don't think we'll be having another meeting for, uh-
Three weeks.
Um, actually, I think that meeting's gonna be canceled. Yeah, they, they, we- Oh, I'm sorry, no, I thought you were talking about the Erika meeting.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I know.
We have a meeting in three days.
Yeah, yeah, no, we have three meetings, right. I was canceling a meeting, I was giving you some time off.
The ch- the chief started shaking his head that he thinks that that's-
Yeah, so I could do a, do a good job on that.
Great. Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second to table this until the next meeting.
Table or continue?
Continue to the next meeting. Um, is there any comments? Public comments? Yes, sir?
I, I have one for each of the individual council members, if there's something specific that you would like to make sure, um, you, you get an answer to, if you'll get hold of me, I'll make sure I specifically research those areas as well.
Sounds good.
And maybe we can do, I know they do have it at, um, our director, Ms. Mendoza, has a, a comparison in cost that we can show the difference between the county system compared to ours. I know they're, I, off the top of my head, I know their radios themselves are like twice the amount of money as our radios, so, um, just if we could do that, that'd be great, and then. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so we'll continue that item. Been one item pulled from the consent calendar, that's item number sixteen, I believe. That's the second reading and adoption of the ordinance approving development agreement number ten-stash-sixteen with Manland Two LLC, MedMen, uh, DHS at Green Horizons cultivation project. And was there a specific question you had?
Yes, this is, this is pretty simple. Uh, this has to do with the art piece. Uh, we in our meeting sent that back to the CCAC for their review, because they, they did not vote on that, is what I had heard the first time.
That's correct.
I just wanted an update to make sure that we're copacetic as far as what the CCAC thinks.
They did hear the item last, uh, Wednesday, May the tenth, and made a recommendation to the city council for approval as submitted.
But that's not continued, Mr. Mayor?
That staff did not, uh, due to the timing of deadlines, it wasn't presented in the staff report.
So we had, that'll have to be brought back to us, Mr. Mayor?
We can bring it back on, staff is preparing it for the June sixth.
Okay. Sorry. Being prepared. Alright, any other questions?
I th- I think, and I hope the CCAC is working on the issue of how we're gonna deal with art in public place in the industrial area too. Just as a second comment.
Alright, do I have any public comment on this item? I see none, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Question?
Yes.
There is a provision that the art in public places, I mean, it seems obvious, but that's in there, right?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so passes unanimously. Any future gen- items, gentlemen and lady? I see none, any public comments, anybody didn't get a chance to speak at the beginning, the meeting would like to speak now? Alright, with that, we are adjourned.